Welcome, everyone. Before I review the agenda, I would like to extend a special welcome to Ryan McLean. This is his first Select Board meeting as our town administrator. Welcome, welcome, welcome.
Six days.
Who's counting, right? Do you have your mic on, right? There you go. Okay. And I also want to extend a special thank you to Jennifer Gibbons because as Ryan and I both learned over the last few weeks when she was on vacation, she is really critical to the operations of the Select Board in Town Hall. Alrighty, so the agenda tonight, there are a couple of little changes, but I'm going to review those as we go through. So we're going to start with community input. Then we have to continue a hearing. Then we have our joint meeting with the Finance Committee and the Town Governance Task, the Carlisle Governance Task Force will be joining us shortly to look at the town meeting warrant articles. And then we had scheduled a presentation on the Governance Task Force final report, but that's not going to be ready yet. So we're going to do that at our, we're hoping to do that at our September 13th meeting. So that's coming off the agenda entirely. So gosh, we just picked up 40 minutes. Then we have the Town Administrators Report, Liaison Reports, Appointments and Resignations. And then a quick review of the warrants that have been signed and then we'll be adjourning. The other thing I want to mention is that when we get to the joint meeting, we've outlined a bunch of the items to be discussed and we're going to start with the Governance Task Force articles. And Rebecca, the Chair of the Committee, is going to be here for that. So we're going to start with that because it's sort of relevant to some of the the other things that we may discuss about town meetings following that. Alrighty. So let me go back to community input. Is there anyone either online that would like to raise their hand or anyone here in person? Pardon?
Did we open the meeting? Do we have to open the meeting?
We already opened it.
Opened it before this hour.
And he said we were going to continue it. You know, he came back. Yeah, thanks. Is there anything, anybody with a hand raised online that's joining us remotely? I don't see anybody up there. And anyone in the audience here in Town Hall? Okay. Then let's move on. So we, we had a hearing several weeks ago with one of the police officers and that hearing, we need to continue to July 13th. So could I have a motion to do that? And remember, we need to give a specific time.
September 13th, Barney.
What did I say?
July.
That's what it says on the. Sorry, it was, that's when the first hearing was held. Sorry, July.
Okay.
No, 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 no. Yeah, I guess that's right. The first hearing was held on July 13th, sorry. And then it's got to be continued to September 13th.
What time?
7:30.
Okay, so I'm.
Open the public hearing first and then continue it.
It's already open.
We had continued it from our previous Select Board meeting, so it's just continuing it to the next one.
So I move to continue the hearing that was opened on July 13th, 2022, in executive session in accordance with the MGL Chapter 39, Section 23b, Paragraph 2, to discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual to September 13th at 7:30.
An open meeting and not executive meeting? That's the next.
It would be, should we say 6:30?
Be up to the.
Lawyer and.
So. It could be an opener, it could be an executive, but right now.
Okay, so but if we do it at 7:30, that means that we would have to have a half an hour of meeting adjourned and go into the executive session. So wouldn't it be better to do it?
Make it at seven? Probably so, right?
Or the very end.
The end, which we don't really know when.
And then, yeah, so can I amend my motion to, to September 13th at 7:00 p.m.?
Is your second? Any discussion? All right, we need a roll call vote on this, please. Arnold, I.
Brown, I.
Modell, I.
Reed, I.
Snell, I.
Excellent. All right, that carries unanimously. Alrighty, so now we're going to open up our joint meeting. So let me start, I guess, with Lynn. Do you want to open up the FinCom part of the meeting?
Yep, so I am calling the meeting for the Financial Committee.
Okay, Lynn, excuse me. Hold on one second, Lynn, come on up. Yeah, sorry.
And.
And we got to share.
Anybody else who's here from FinCom should come up.
Do you guys mind?
And we'll share some here.
Here's another.
Yeah.
So we're calling the Finance Committee meeting to order. I'd like a roll call for everybody, please.
Tatia here.
Delia here.
Liang here.
Finsky here.
Maro here.
Triola is on mute.
Scott, you're on mute.
We always go Elspeth.
Oh, Scott.
Triola here. Let's try that again. Multi-level mutes I got to undo here.
Thanks, Scott. All right, so if you don't mind, I'd like to open it up a little bit around the warrant article and just kind of give some context here.
Okay, hang on one second. And I just wanted to say that also Wayne Davis is here, is our town moderator. And then I thought, is Rebecca on the?
Yes, she is.
Joined us remotely?
And Brian and Vanessa.
Yeah, so Rebecca, I know you wanted to open up the Task Force meeting.
I actually don't think we have quorum unless you have someone else in the room there. So I don't think that we need to do that. We'll just be providing some informal input.
Okay, all right, great. Thanks, Rebecca.
Thank you.
Alrighty, so yeah, please, Lynn.
Okay.
Go right ahead. No problem.
Jumping, jumping.
Okay.
So we discussed this at our last meeting. And first, I'd like to open it up for the Finance Committee if anybody would like to give a little bit of context or some of the discussion we had the last meeting. I know Scott, you had some input. And you as well, Melissa, is there anything you'd like to say before I?
May I just give a little background for anybody else's listening? So this is one of the three articles that the Governance Task Force has been considering around the way the budget is developed. Is that a fair summary? Yeah. Wayne, did you want to clarify something or?
I'd just like to make a, oh, sorry. Just like to make a suggestion. You're about to repeat what was done multiple times this spring. Have a proposal from a committee. And you're asking for comment from another committee before you've heard the proposal and the reasoning from the people who are proposing what is to happen. I think you're doing a disservice to yourselves and a disservice to everyone who's listening by having the discussion.
Rather than starting with the Task Force.
It's not what we do at town meeting. It's not what you typically do when, when you ask for proponents of anything to come before you. I'm not aware of any board or committee that does that. It was a mistake when it was done in the spring, and I think it would be a mistake to repeat it here.
Yeah.
Just as a process.
Yeah. I, I think that's a good point, Wayne. I, I should have thought about that myself. If, if, if it's all with you, well, let's start with Rebecca as the Chair or any other member of her Task Force. And which is why I wanted to move that part up so that we look at the Governance Task Force presents to us their thinking about the three articles in the Fall Town Meeting. So please, Rebecca, thank you.
So thank you. First of all, thank you for hearing me, for having us here. I'm sorry that we're a bit short today. We have one, at least one of us are out of town potentially too. I think, first of all, so yes, we have three warrant articles that I know we sent you drafts last week. And I think we've discussed, well, I know that we've discussed one of them with members of the FinCom. We've been talking about it for several months now, you know, since before town meeting. And so as a result of those ongoing discussions and where we are today, I think the Task Force is going to have a little bit of a change in how we intend to move forward with the warrant articles and with the recommendations. So we will not be asking the Select Board to put any articles on the warrant for fall or for spring it, for that matter. As a town meeting body, we believe that our duty is to make recommendations which aren't political. So we firmly believe that one of the major structural issues faced by Carlisle is a siloing of departments. We heard that loud and clear from the responses in our survey and from the interviews that we conducted. And as a result, the other thing that's tied in with that is that the town administrator did not have enough authority or appropriate authority to be able to do their job. And, and so when we crafted our recommendations, our goal was to try to strengthen the town administrator and eliminate that siloed effect. That was kind of one of the major focuses of all of the warrant article recommendations that we entertained. During recent months, what we were, what we view as relatively minor change to complement a proposed town administrator bylaw, we intended to propose and which was, this was recommended, I'm sorry, the town administrator bylaw was recommended by the last Task Force that was held 30 years ago, that was convened 30 years ago. We wanted to provide that town administrator with the proper authority to participate in the initial drafting of the budget. We've found that that has been met not openly. It's, there were some initial, I think, emotional reactions to it back in the springtime. And I think those have probably carried through. And so so we began to engage in negotiations that were ultimately fruitless, in our opinion. We haven't heard back. And so we felt like we were going nowhere. And so we feel like this is not something we're comfortable with, since it feels political. And we think that engaging in horse trading pulls us up from our responsibility to present what we believe is the best for Carlisle without being watered down. So as a result, we will complete our report. We do intend for it to be completed by the 13th. So that if there is a desire to put the warrant articles on the warrant anyway, that it will be there to refer to and to underscore why we think that they are, why, why we think these things are critical to Carlisle. It will include our original warrant article drafts as well as the current versions. And it will be, you know, we're going to leave it up to the Select Board to decide to include them or not. And then to move them at town meeting if you believe that that is the appropriate course of action. So I know that this is not necessarily what everyone expected. But we, in order to maintain our integrity and our responsibility to the town meeting body, this is what we have, where we are and what we've come to decide. So I appreciate the opportunity to share this piece with you and I guess, there you go.
Yeah. And does anyone else from the Task Force want to add anything? Okay. So that changes substantially, you know, for the Select Board, right? We, obviously for us, what we need to think about is what if any of these, we, and we don't have to make this decision tonight, but we have between now and September 13th to figure out what we might or might not want to put on the town warrant of these three articles. And then we also have the Greeno Dam, I mean, the Greeno Barn demolition and then the Scenic Road designation. So, you know, sort of broadly, one of the questions is, you know, what, what provides us with enough reason to hold a special town meeting? But unless any Select Board members want to offer any comments right now, we can come back to it. And I'm thinking we should let the FinCom offer their perspective. Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah. I think.
Yeah.
Well, their perspective on what?
Well, it sounds like you had prepared something you wanted to say about the, the article concerning the development of the budget, right? Yeah. And let me, I apologize. I wasn't doing my best job as Chair not to sort of step back before we even got into this to say, let's all just remember that we're all here serving as volunteers and we're all trying to do what we think is best for the town. And so I know it's been a difficult process, you know, on, on both or a number of sides of this issue. So let's, you know, just try to remember that as we're going about moving forward. Yeah.
I guess I would prefer that we get the input about this from this FinCom after we've read the report, because we don't know what we're getting input on at this point.
Well, I, let me see if I understand this correctly, Rebecca, that the report is going to include the current article, that the articles that we had in our packet as well as the original articles. Is that right?
Correct.
So you're not anticipating that those are going to change? And then what your report would provide is just a lot of the back, the research and the, and the thinking behind it.
Correct. It'll be, and I think actually the other two warrant articles will not, I don't think we had other versions of those. I think we just had the original version that was to the budget bylaw, which was even, you know, it was, I think, a change to a handful of words, maybe less than six. And, you know, we had a couple of different versions that we went through after a couple of different meetings and discussions with FinCom members. And now, so the current version that was sent to FinCom a couple of weeks ago is the, the, there'll be the initial version with, that was unchanged. It was our original proposal and then the one that was sent to FinCom a few weeks ago.
Okay.
The rest of the report around.
Right.
So I think it would actually be beneficial for FinCom to also have had a chance to read the report before they give us input on that, on any of those.
Yeah. Well, here, one thing I'm wondering though is so we have, we have basically a month until, or actually less than a month, more like two and a half weeks, isn't it? Till our next Select Board meeting. And that's when we have to close the warrant. And so if we wanted to, as a Select Board, wanted to try to address the article concerning the development of the budget for a Fall Town Meeting, I think it might be useful to hear from the FinCom now about what their concerns are or, you know, wishes would be so that we could decide, is this something we think we could reach some resolution on between now and the 13th? Or, or not? Because if it's a not, then that would be good to know and we can, we have, you know, we're going to be getting into the budget process fairly quickly for FY '24 before we even, before we get to the town meeting in October. So we could say, we're not going to put it on this fall. Let's let our new town administrator and the FinCom and our finance director, you know, have the experience of working on the budget together this year, seeing how that all plays out. And then we could consider whether it makes sense to, to in fact, do some kind of a bylaw for the Spring Town Meeting. So if we were to set aside that article, that warrant article, then we would have the, the town clerk moving to an appointed position and we would have the town administrator responsibility bylaws. Plus the other two, which in my opinion, I think we could have, that would make, having a town meeting worthwhile. But I think if we don't have any of these three articles and it's just Greeno and the Scenic Road, it doesn't make sense to have a town meeting. I know that's a lot of information to dump out there at once, but that, anyway, that's my thinking about why I think it might be useful to hear from FinCom now. How do you?
I think there's no rush for the FinCom article to get on before April Town Meeting because it wasn't meant to take and be going to effect until next budget season, because we can't do that. And that would give time for the FinCom and for us and for Ryan to all do what you said. Get Ryan up and, you know, do this year's, you know, at least get started on this year's budgeting. Have a chance to read the report in a centaurally, then all working with the same amount of information. And we do a much more considered job rather than trying, so my, my druther is to not move, put that warrant, that on the warrant with this.
Fall meeting.
And leave the other ones alone.
Thoughts from other board members?
I think if there is no rush on this particular thing, then it would make sense to wait for the entire report. I don't know about the rush on the other parts, though. Kind of a different.
I don't know about the rush on the other. Definitely no rush on this one.
Though I think, yeah. We need to keep the conversation going and not wait. So that we have a lot of, you know, we have the time to to discuss it and consider it. I mean, a lot of work's gone into it. So I think, I think if we're deciding not to hear tonight, I think, you know, we should keep it on the agenda and keep talking about it once we get that report and make sure that we are openly discussing it and deciding.
And so that's suggesting we wait on this particular warrant article until the spring. After we've had a chance to look at the report and we can, because as of the 13th, we won't, we need to close the warrant on the 13th.
Yeah. I don't know, it's kind of an awkward situation, right? You know, because we're processing what we've just heard right now and making
Right.
decisions on it. So it's a perfect recipe to make a bad decision. But it seems to me like, you know, if in fact, we were not going to put anything in place until the next budget year, then it is a fact that we could wait until the spring to have it before town meeting, which makes me wonder why we were going to have a Fall Town Meeting anyway. It wasn't urgent.
Well, it's, it's one of the things we had promised the Governance Task Force.
Yeah.
You have two hands up on the.
Okay. David, I'll call on you just a sec. I was just going to check in. Travis, did you want to come? Okay. Yeah, David.
And Brian's on that.
Yeah, I see him. Yeah, David, are you muted? Dave Modell?
I am here. Yeah, I double muted. Sorry about that.
Okay.
I agree, I agree with both Nathan and Kate. I think it does deserve deliberation. It shouldn't be rushed. There's no reason to rush. And I too now question whether we should go to the, you know, time and expense of a Fall Town Meeting. I guess we can talk about, I, I don't think there's urgency on, you know, the clerk or the bylaw. Greenhouse is the only thing maybe has some urgency, so we could discuss that, but I don't believe, I think we should, if we don't really have a compelling reason, it would be good not to have the Fall Town Meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, David. Travis?
I share those same views. Relatively new, and I think, I feel bad that we've had the Finance Committee come, but we'll, we can certainly talk about Reno if that's available.
Yeah.
Okay.
Brian, I see your hands up.
Thank you, appreciate it. Two things I like to say, they're both brief. The first is actually, Mr. Modell just said, and this I would hesitate to make clear is my personal opinion. And it's not been something that was discussed or agreed on by the Task Force as a Task Force opinion. But I think just, it's, I don't think it's simply about the finance article, but town administrator article, in my opinion, requires review by the new town administrator to get input on what he feels is necessary to do his job as well. Part of what we were hamstrung by is we didn't really have a current town administrator to actually be interacting with. And you know, that, that's something that I think behooves him to be looking at to see if he has any input as well. And quite frankly, it involves interaction with the personnel bylaw, which my understanding is the Select Board is reviewing separately anyway. And they kind of dovetail hand in hand. It makes sense to revise both of them, to adopt the town ministry bylaw while concurrently revising the personnel bylaw, in my personal opinion, to avoid inconsistencies. I'd also note that, and Rebecca can correct me if I'm wrong, but there will be at least one other article that we had dropped before that will be in the report. And this kind of goes back to how we had ideas of what we wanted to do and then we were basically told not to do them. And this was back in the spring and was sort of the first iteration of feeling like we were being leveraged. So it's not just going to be the, the articles that we sent you for inclusion in the packet. There'll be at least one other one that we're going to recommend what we originally wanted to recommend. And you guys can decide what to do with it, but we're not going to not mention an article simply because we were told before it was a bad idea. And again, Rebecca can correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I believe that is what we intend on doing.
No, that's correct. It'll include, and I think to take any fuzziness away from that statement, it, we're going to include, I think, the town meeting warrant article with some things in it that were originally proposed, that were in the final version that was even put out to town meeting was a little bit different, so.
Okay. So it sounds like there'll be a lot to look at in that report. Thank you. So I believe then it's, it sounds like we're in agreement then about waiting on the budget bylaw until next spring. And then the question is, is that, is that a correct assumption about how we as a board feel?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. And then, so then I think what we have to address is the four remaining items that were being considered for a town meeting. The clerk becoming an appointed position, the TA responsibilities bylaw. And with that, the, the, as Brian mentioned, there's a piece of the Personnel Administrator bylaw that we need to fix to make them consistent. And then the Greeno Barn demolition and then really secondarily, the Scenic Road designation. So, go ahead.
Are you looking for comments?
Yeah, yeah. Do we think, I guess mainly the question is, right, do we think that warrants those four items? Does that make a, for a town meeting in the fall? A meaningful town meeting? And at some point, Wayne, if you'd like, want to offer a comment on that, we'd be happy to have it. But Travis, what are your thoughts?
Well, the question being was born a town meeting or on those articles? Because I, I think, you know, Brian had a really good comment about, you know, with the new town administrator, I think, and, and I, I'm not speaking for the board, but my own opinion of how I interacted when we brought on the new town administrator is that I think that this board is moving towards having that new town administrator take on a much, I wouldn't say stronger, but it is a stronger role within the government governance of the town of Carlisle. And so I think having your input and, you know, kind of moving this, you know, in, in a direction that, you know, you're going to evaluate those things like the silos and the, the various components. And you've talked about it with us already. And so I think giving you time to review this makes a lot of sense for things like the, you know, article with the clerk or with the, you know, the, your, your own weighing in on your own responsibility. But we're going to, we're going to evaluate that. And I think it's important to have you as part of that process. And so I, I would think that those articles would be best served by pushing those off, you know, until we have a fuller picture. And obviously, you know, we, we have a changing of the guard here. And so we, I think, getting a sense of, of, you know, from the outside, you're, you're coming in and seeing, you know, these are obviously things that have been studied, but you can also weigh in on them as well. So that's what I think. And so based on that, I would think we're kind of down to two items. And Greeno is really a question, you know, obviously we have to under, be in full agreement. But I think the board has agreed that we think that something needs to be done immediately. And so now we just have to get support behind that and make sure we can pay for it. And so if long we can do that, if we need town meeting to do that, I think we should do that. But if not, because I don't think that that should wait until the spring, frankly. Yeah. So sorry, it's long-winded, but that's what I think.
Other thoughts from the Select Board about the Fall Town Meeting and
I guess.
Which articles?
Okay, so my question is, is there any way, and I'll also FinCom this, administrator, is there any way to deal with the Greeno, Greeno Barn demolition funding without going to town meeting it temporarily or, you know? Before, can we wait till April, or do we have to go for bonding? How, you know?
What is the amount of issue?
Uh, a million, is it a million?
No, no, no.
Hundred, no, sorry.
Two hundred.
Two hundred thousand, sorry.
Yeah, two hundred to two hundred and fifty, we don't really know for sure, because we don't have a estimate.
Mentioned we would have an estimate before town.
Tempting to get more of an estimate, yeah, it's, it's been difficult so far, but.
Again, if you haven't had the context behind it, it's, it has been deemed a hazard, and it's an attractive nuisance, and it is a problem, a real challenge for the town of Carlisle, and we need to address it sooner rather than later.
It's become urgent.
Yeah, and we had voted actually quite a while ago as a select board.
Twenty, um, what was before I came on?
Yeah, but.
Over five years ago, it was.
But we've not, um, we've not, we've not, you know, figured out the funding, and so just let it, it's just been on the back burner.
I think it wasn't voted on, I think it was just decided too expensive and so.
So is it estimated to be about two or two hundred and fifty thousand just for the demolition?
Correct.
What you're hearing so far?
Yeah.
So I think, I think we've had this conversation before many times. One question I have is, would any of this fall under CPA funds?
I was just gonna ask that, too.
Which, which when I look at it, well, from our perspective, I know we've talked about this, it seems like it would. Now, maybe, I don't know if some of it or all of it could be covered under CPA to kind of give us some financial relief there.
Well, and let's not.
The read from the, the read from the.
That's right, which we talked about.
Yeah, at the last CPC meeting, I raised this question, um, and, you know, some of us are new to the committee, but the, the two that have been on it for a while said that, um. They, the, the. CPC requires that, um. When you, if, for a demolition project. You need to be able to demonstrate that there's a benefit to one of the various categories, so either recreation or. And it wouldn't follow, or conservation, obviously, it wouldn't work for housing or, um. The fourth one.
Um, historic.
His, yeah.
It's anti-historic and certain.
Right, so the sense was it would not qualify.
Right, yeah, but you know what, I'm thinking, we should, we're select board, we should think about ARPA. That's a pot of money, um, that's sitting there. We certainly have uses for it. Um, but, you know, which then would be shifted over into your, you know, we would, um. Municipal facilities would probably need to have a little extra funding, because that's, you know, next year, because a lot of their projects are coming out of the ARPA funds, but. Maybe we could talk turkey.
Yeah, because the ARPA funds would not require town meeting approval. Yeah.
Right, um, i- if it's torn down, does that fall into open space? That's a category in CPA.
Yeah.
CPC, yeah, but again, it needs a town meeting vote for.
Yeah, you need a town meeting.
Right, you'd have to go to, right, for CPA funding.
Mm hmm.
Go ahead, Nathan.
Personally, I, you know, I, I totally understand the urgency of taking it down, but I think we're kind of a little bit putting the cart before the horse, and we don't even know how much it's gonna cost. And we're already talking about where are we gonna be getting the money from? Um, and, or, you know, I, I, I don't think it's a service to the town to hold a town meeting. Over one or two articles, and we've also always tried to make. Budgetary funding, you know, monetary things, I should be saying, not a part of the fall meeting. Um, so it, it would seem to me like getting out to bid, talking through what all the, the, the various, um, options are for funding. And then deciding, is it in the spring town meeting, is it not in the spring town meeting, but not letting it go beyond the spring town meeting, you know, getting it. Getting it, you know, taken down, you know, this spring. Um, or late winter, whenever town meeting actually happens, I feel like a little bit like we're. We're trying to make a decision about something without having all of the information, kind of like the previous one, right?
Yeah.
Um, I think it's, it just, it's just a little bit awkward. It's, I, I feel, find it's hard to make the right decision for the town without all the information that we would need.
Yeah, and then at the same time, I've, I'm feeling sort of the way Travis is, you know, the, this sort of the, how acute the situation is over there. And, um. The degree to which. You know, we are looking at a potential. Uh, we could have a, you know, really potentially. Um, awful thing happen there to somebody or a fire or.
Well, we're trying to decide whether to have a town meeting or not, so if there are other, what, what, I guess my point is. If there were something critical where we really just could not wait for another second. Do we have any other options other than a town meeting? And I'm thinking we do, because we have, let's say, for instance, the ARPA fund that we could say. We absolutely have to use the ARPA fund for it, because now we have to do this, and we can't wait until even the spring for a town meeting.
And this does legitimate, legitimately fall within ARPA?
It does, because, uh, ARPA has, we have elected to. Um, bring our, ARPA funds in as a replacement of, um, revenues, and so it may be used for any legitimate town. Function.
Yeah.
Next.
I guess, since we're talking off the cuff here, what would, you know, what, what do you all think about that?
Well, Scott's our ARPA guy.
Like, Scott, do I, and Scott, have you been listening to this? Scott, Sarah?
Yeah, hi, can you hear me? I'm in Carlisle, so my reception is bad. Yeah, I think, so absolutely, you can use ARPA funds for this. You would have to, given the amount, uh, you would need to follow federal procurement, so if you do go out to bid. Even if you're not gonna use or don't know, I would definitely do it in a way that's compliant with ARPA. Um, we have about a million dollars left in uncommitted funds. Um, so, you know, if it's in the neighborhood of ARPA, you know, I'm not advocating for or against it, but it certainly would be a legitimate use of it.
Okay, thanks, Scott. David, is your hand up? You'd like to speak?
Oh, sorry, I forgot to take it down. No, thanks.
Okay, okay.
One question I have is, um, as you're going to bid, have they talked about the timeline for how quickly they could get to work?
No, we don't know.
Because the only thing I was thinking is if it's gonna push out. April or so, um, was it the complete streets that we had paving company basically on hold, ready to go with a date? I mean, it was contingent on the town meeting approval.
Yes.
So if you're looking at March or something like that.
Exactly, we can just push it out.
To May.
Yeah.
Contingency that the town would approve.
Right.
If you don't.
Right.
Yeah.
But I think what we're coming to is that it is not urgent that we put this on in the fall. As a warrant article, I think if, if something disastrous were to happen, we have other ways to. Move forward on it.
And things could happen that would mean we can need to bring it to a meeting, then what do we do? Right, and you're this fall?
Yeah.
But I think, uh, to, to state the obvious, that we could be most useful if we had a, an estimate.
Yeah, yeah, obviously.
Do you have any idea when you are gonna get a bid?
As far as prioritizing the.
Right.
I don't know.
Yeah.
So have you heard?
Potential contractor that I can reach out to, uh, they would be providing us the basic estimate. We wouldn't, we wouldn't bid it until. Through the funding source. But you could prep a bid.
Yeah.
Contingent on the funding source, as you mentioned.
Maybe I'll steal from the previous bid that went out, make your best.
Typically contractors would come out and look at a job and give you a rough estimate, and then you would add some contingency.
Yeah. All right, so the sense, it sounds to me like we are, Wayne, did you wanna offer any comment about a fall town meeting? Okay, so I think we are, it sounds to me like we've reached the conclusion that we, it is not necessary.
Oh, well, that really is not urgent.
The scenic road designation, yeah, that's, that's not, that can wait.
I know.
That's true, they gave.
And I was gonna ask, why they were sending it to us, because it's a planning board. Any question, anyway. I've never spent all the time putting that together. Wanted to say, I don't.
I don't know if there's anyone here representing the, um, Martin Street, um, road designation. I mean, typically, that wouldn't have come up, except that we, that having at the meeting, right, so, yeah, it was, it can wait. Yeah, yeah. Um. So with that in mind, uh, do we need to take a formal vote to, because we voted to hold a fall town meeting? I guess we need to take a formal vote. Not to, okay, so. Please.
First of all, Lynn and Finance Committee, it's nice to meet you. Really looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
I just like budgeting, so however you guys want to do it is fine by me. Um, in terms of my role in these bylaws, uh, I do think that's important, but both the budgeting process and the structure of your government is, is a town decision. So you'll hear me say a lot, if you want to get rid of your silos, then you do need more structure, but that structure is dependent on what the town wants and what the town's comfortable with. So you shouldn't plan it for me, and you shouldn't plan it for Peggy, and you shouldn't plan budget process based on who you have in, you should plan it based on what you want. As a community, and I'm happy to help you get there or not, so I'm thrilled to work with all of you. Um, we're gonna get it done, and we're gonna do good things, and I'm just really pleased to be part of it.
Same here, we're looking forward to working with you.
And online people, too.
Yeah, and I'll just say.
Hear you.
Yeah.
Wait, it's very difficult to hear at home, just letting you know, I don't know whether I can raise this.
Ah.
Yay, thanks.
Um, and I, I think, I, I, I think I can speak for the select board as a whole to say that we're, we're very, um, excited to have Ryan here and also to be able to work with the finance committee. I mean, that would be our hope, that there's a much closer, um, collaboration there, uh, and also including our finance director, so that we'd really, we're excited about having that happen. And I think it makes a lot of sense to use this as a, as a good transition year, right, to see, um, what's gonna make sense going forward, so, yeah, thank you all for being here. Yeah. Um, all right, let's have a motion then about, um. Not holding a town meeting. In October.
I move that we vote to not hold the special town meeting on Monday, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two.
Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Hearing none, let's take a roll call vote. Arnold, I.
Brown eye. Not used to being second.
Yeah, and, and David is.
David? Mr. Modell, I mean, we have a vote? Is he on there anymore?
Oh, yeah, he's.
There he is, yeah.
David, we're voting.
No.
On, uh, not having, yeah, I think he might be muted. Here he comes.
Still can't hear you.
David, um, can you give us a, your roll call vote on not holding a fall town meeting?
Could you do it in the chat if we, because we can't hear you?
Well, go ahead then.
Reed I.
Snell I.
Uh, David will. Pardon?
David abstained.
Okay, we'll go ahead with that. David abstained. Okay, so that has, um, changed things dramatically. Um. Do we, is there anything, so, and I guess to go back to Greeno then, uh, so Kate, representing the select board, you'll have a discussion with the ARPA committee? And then, uh, I know you've got two of the, two of the three of you here, and then Ryan is gonna move ahead, it trying to get, uh, an estimate, a rough estimate. And then we can come back to looking at the question of, um, putting out the.
I think what we're saying is that the Greeno is going on, on to the April town meeting, and if there's something that critical happens. And it can't wait that long, then it's gonna come to FinCom and ARPA for, you know, to see if there's other alternative funding sources for it.
That's what I think we're saying as well.
Okay, and I thought we said, I thought we were saying we're gonna move ahead and trying to deal with it, um.
No.
With ARPA funds, you're.
I, I think that description is right. We're gonna just keep the ball rolling, but if there is some critical emergency, if, I mean, I, I don't know at what's our threshold at this point, but we've already deemed that we voted to tear it down. So I think we've, we're moving in the right path, and I think we're moving reasonably fast to do that as a government.
Yeah.
Okay, so our, so then our instruction to Ryan would be to pursue getting us a rough draft, a rough estimate of what it might cost, and then we'll go from there.
A real estimate, right, because we're gonna need that for April to get it on the warrant anyway.
Well, but can you get a real estimate before you do the, um, formal, um. What's the right word? Procurement process for this size amount, what Scott was referring to? Yeah.
In my opinion, you need a firm estimate to procure properly, find thresholds, et cetera, and to make sure that you're bidding appropriately.
All right, so, and you think we can start that bid process? Soon, or, I mean, after, you're gonna get a rough estimate and then look at, uh, a bidding process to get a firm estimate?
So I'll talk to contractors if they exist, and I can find one that's willing to do the work, um, put together a rough timeline and an estimate, bring that back to. And then you decide the urgency and the funding.
Okay.
It'll be the police department that will define the urgency when, you know, we find something really, or if the thing comes first in the flames or whatever.
All right, good, thank you. Uh, well, so you want to probably formally close your meeting, okay?
You want to do the.
Oh, I'm sorry, that, yeah, your, your appointment for Heidi, yeah, thank you. Yeah.
Yep, yep, yep. Um, let's see, that's on page twenty-seven in our packet, uh. If someone in our, on our board, would you like to say anything first, uh, FinCom about your, um. New, uh, your recommendation of Heidi, is it Showberg, Joburg? Showberg, okay.
Yes, as a committee, we unanimously, um, voted to, uh, have Heidi be presented to the select board. Uh, it was a difficult decision. We had two very qualified candidates. Um, and, um, it was, it was a very, very hard decision to make. I guess we were, we were spoiled for choice, but ultimately, um. We did vote that He- Heidi would be a good fit for the committee.
All right.
May I have a motion?
I move that the board select and appoint Heidi Showberg of five twenty-sixth School Street to the finance committee.
Have a second.
What's the term?
Uh, three years.
Three years. Three-year terms, thank you.
It expires in three years.
Inspired term.
Right. Yeah, a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, we're doing roll call, correct?
Yeah, because David is remote.
Okay. Um, Arnold, I.
Okay, Reed I.
Snell I.
Great, it's approved unanimously. Welcome to Heidi.
Right, yes.
Okay, now, would you like to close your meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to formally adjourn the FinCom meeting if we could have a roll call.
Catriona I.
Lee I.
Liang I.
Lipinski I.
McMarrel I.
Triola I.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for coming. Um, Rebecca and, uh, Brian and Vanessa, thank you for joining us, representing the task force.
Thank you.
All right, good night.
Take care.
Do the rest of the appointments while we're on that page. We don't have to scroll through all that.
Well, we're pretty much ready for it. We're gonna go down to the town administrators' report, okay, so that's, that's where all that is. Um, Ryan, do you want to, uh? Shall we, do you want us just to do all the appointments here first, and then we'll go into your.
Have a different one.
Report, okay, so if you go to, um, page thirty-one in the packet. Um, I would love to have somebody make the appointment, the, um, motions. First of all, oh, these are not the, uh, okay, hold on, the appointments are, sorry, they are further down, aren't they?
Section seven, I have it.
Page fifty-three, yeah, I'm just getting everybody else to the same place. Page fifty-three in the packet. Okay.
So I move to appoint on, uh, Lana Zamaro to the Environmental Sustainability Committee to serve a one-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. I'm gonna do all the sustainability's, and Robert Zog to the Environmental Sustainability Committee to serve a one-year term ending in June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And Judy Askarov of the Environmental Sustainability Committee to serve a one-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and Christine. And Christina, Krista Dolop. Christina, hi, Chris. No, there's an Osto at the end. Anyway, to the Environmental Sustainability Committee to serve a one-year term ending June 30th, 2023. And Joeth Barlas to the Environmental Sustainability Committee to serve a one-year term ending June 30th, 2023.
There's one more, which is Dan Cook.
Oh, and Dan Cook. To the Environmental Sustainability Committee to serve a one-year term ending June 30th, 2023.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Just a comment that Dan is there as a representative to make the connection between the Transfer Station Action Committee. So he's on the Action Committee, and they agreed that it made sense to have one of their members on the Sustainability Committee.
Makes all kinds of sense.
Yep. All righty, well, if there's no more discussion, let's move ahead and take a roll call vote to appoint these members. Arnold, I.
Brown eye.
Modell, I.
Reed eye.
Snell eye.
Right, excellent, thank you.
I also move to appoint Christine Johnson to the Community Preservation Committee as the representative from the Carlisle Affordable Housing Trust to serve a one-year term ending June 30th, 2023.
Second. And is, no, she's not on the call. Okay, I didn't know if she. Do you want to say anything about her?
Christine is a new member to the Housing Trust. We're very excited to have her. She is, um, she's a civil engineer and very intelligent and going to be, I think, a great addition to our volunteer corps.
Great. All right, um, let's take a roll call vote on the appointment of Christine Johnson. Arnold, I.
Brown eye.
Reed eye. Oh, sorry.
David?
Probably doesn't have enough bandwidth to have this.
Wow, look at that. We just. We just called your name. The vote. Yeah, okay. And so you're approving Christine Johnson.
Yes.
Okay.
I did, by the way, text me when you.
Oh, did you?
Oh, good. All right.
I didn't know if it was I or N.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Snell eye.
All right, great. So Christine is appointed. And welcome, Christine.
I move to accept the resignation of Wendy Barrow for the Council on Aging effective in.
Have a second. Thank you. Any discussion?
You know, as always with all of our volunteers, I'd like to thank her for her service.
Excellent. All right, um, so now we can do this by voice vote. Yay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. Uh, thank you, Wendy, for your service.
Yes.
Um, all right, and thanks to everyone that's volunteering to join these two boards. That's terrific news.
That was Christine.
Yeah. Yeah.
Didn't recognize her behind.
All righty, so, um, let us go then to the Town Administrator's Report. Ryan, uh, let's, do you want to, um, explain any of the, is there, I'm going to explain some of the, maybe the first motion, yeah, go through them one by one? Okay, this is page 31.
Yeah, just one second. Five, page 31. It's. It's.
All right, so the transition is, is obviously taking up most of my time. As explained in my commitment to you, the idea behind a lot of the transition work will be to create a document for you about my entry here, some initial thoughts to help inform future discussions, and of course, do all the work that needs to get done immediately and do the same. But I would like to provide you with an entry report and a transition document about the six-month mark, just to inform you about all the things that I've investigated. And you, it won't be any surprises, because I'm sure we'll talk about it as we're going along. But in my first week, I was able to meet with a large chunk of the staff, our entire finance team, the public safety team, um, a good chunk of land use, still, still going to meet with a Board of Health tomorrow, and a lot of our resident services, to include the schools, went out to Public Works, did a tour of the library, fire department. I think they tried to recruit me to be a call firefighter, so that'll be up to you, whether or not you let me do that.
I'm non-resident.
Oh, yeah, just have to be close enough to get here.
My EMT, but, um, and then, um, you know, working around Town Hall and having conversations with, with all of our employees. So I can tell you right off the bat, you have exceptional staff. They were going to teach me more than I've learned so far in my career about how to do the various things in, in the departments. And they all seem very eager to coordinate our efforts and to improve the town. So I couldn't, I couldn't be happier about the situation that we're in and where we're going to be going. Some of my first focuses from these conversations will be, and none of these are a surprise to you, but formalizing financial policies and processes, coordinating HR efforts, understanding the budget process, which we discussed tonight, and then communicating overall down to the department level. That was a really big concern from the staff, to make sure that the information is flowing from you to them and back up. So I will make sure that that, that happens. That's a commitment I can make to them and to you. And I'm starting to work on communicating with the volunteer boards and committees. Um, all of them have graciously invited me to their meetings. There's only so much time, so I will.
All 41 of them.
Work with each one to try and get there. And then, uh, working on space in Town Hall and making sure that we have a plan for that. And then Kate, I am in IT, working on that, investing in that, have a meeting this week. So we will, we will hit all the big points and continue the transition. For, uh, human resources, so I'm going to try and segment this report out into various functions that I have in the coming time. But the really top priorities for this month will be the, uh, helping the Planning Board hire a town planner through there. We've worked to, to build a committee for that and have engaged with the Planning Board Chair and connecting. It's, it's their appointment, but we will work together to make sure that that, they get a quality person, and then we'll find them space. And then the Assistant Town Administrator, we put that, I put that in your packet. The recruitment ad, going to work through all the channels that I have. We have a couple of candidates that want to come here and, and work and do this work. So we're hoping to, uh, to fill that position pretty quickly. So by the end of September, I'm hoping to round off the staff with these, with these positions, uh, assuming that we get the type of candidates that we need. Following up on some of the projects that Steve was working on, um, the Steves, Steve Vastic and Steve Ledoux worked on warding Neyland Construction with the design and Sullivan ADA compliant ramp for the Carlisle Police Station. So tracking that, the contract award total is, is in this report. And, um, the contract calls for a substantially completed ramp by September 30th. And Steve also made a great recommendation to reach out to the Historical Commission to make sure that they're, they're tracking this project and working with the Police Department to coordinate it. I do have an action item for you on the next item, so Election Police Details. As part of the newly signed Votes Act, the assignment of details at elections now falls on the Select Board. It's been added to your duties. So the Town Clerk is recommending that the Select Board delegate this authority to Chief Fisher for future elections, which is what is currently done, but to provide that clear trail. Uh, she has written a vote for you to take if you're willing to do that. And of course, I've provided background information or can answer any questions about that.
And would you like us to do that motion now?
Yes, please.
Okay. So it's on, um, page 31 of our packet. Would someone like to make that motion? The first one under five.
Move the Select Board vote per the recently voted Votes Act, section 72 of chapter 92 of the Acts of 2022, to assign a sufficient number of police officers at Carlisle's polling location, 66 Westford Street on September 6th, 2022, to preserve order and to aid in enforcing the laws relating to elections. And further, to vote to designate the Chief of Police as the Appointing Authority of Police Details for all future elections, assigning specific police officers according to scheduling and availability.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Questions for Ryan? All right, hearing none. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that motion carries.
All right, uh, moving on to information sharing, have started to work through my communication plan, uh, doing so with the Select Board, making sure that you're updated weekly on, on what the staff is working on, what I'm working on, and what's coming up in the meetings. Additionally, um, that information will be pushed back down to the staff after this meeting. So they'll be updated on things like not having a fall town meeting and other important items that, that they should know in order to understand what's going on at, at a high level in town so that they can execute their functions. Uh, Jen's already hard at work with the Town Clerk's Office on a town website upgrade. Uh, we will do this upgrade, so that is going to happen cost neutral and maybe, maybe some value add. So that's something that we will roll out, present to you, test with the staff. Hopefully by the fall, have a nice new website to share information on, and then training at the department level to make sure that each department is updating and putting out information, uh, website. As I told you before, websites are 24-hour access to the town, and they, they should be treated as such. Also reserved, uh, Facebook and Twitter handles for the Town of Carlisle. That's going to be rolled out slowly. The idea behind that is not to engage with folks, although comments are allowed as long as they follow a certain decorum. It is to provide official information from the town directly to residents that then can be shared in other communication channels, and hopefully they will be. So things like the Select Board voting to not have a fall town meeting would be the type of information, any reports that are generated, new hires, people who've resigned, appointments, uh, type of things that people want to know about. Once these are ready to go, I will, uh, communicate these channels to the public, and we expect to grow this over time. And this is a duty that I would assign to the Assistant Town Administrator, uh, once that person is hired.
Hey, question? So you want parallel information? I mean, if it's on one of those social media accounts, it's on the website as well.
Yes.
Information shouldn't be asymmetric.
All around. Everything will be shared in the, in the same way. Right, uh, and then this report is, uh, Steve Ledoux's from, am I saying that right? French enough to be able to pull that off. Steve Ledoux. His, his final report has some, uh, information that's really important. So, um, there's a Ride to Defeat ALS. I'm assuming this is an annual event that you all know about, that I'm learning about here, but it's going to take place in September 18th, and this will be the 28th year. So the routes have historically gone through different towns. Uh, this year it'll start in Wayland and move through a portion of route, which includes Carlisle on Concord Street, Concord Road Sidewalk, Center Pathway, and Lowell Street before heading into Chelmsford. There will be, uh, small lawn signs set for navigation of the route that will be placed in the evening and removed by the next evening. And it begins at 7:00 AM, so the riders would be in Carlisle during the morning hours. Looking for the Board to vote to approve this event as it has in years past. The motion is in your packets.
Page 31 again. Somebody like to make that motion?
I. I'm sorry, which one was it?
It's the second move.
Recognize the importance of the Ride to Defeat ALS on September 18th, 2022, and approve the time and route as found in the Town Administrator's Report. Is this, um, pending chatting and talking to the police? Does that already happened?
Uh, that's a good question. We usually have that contingent on police.
Contingent on the police, um, being aware and, and okay with it. I guess Steve did that, but since it's not stated, should.
Yeah. We, and, and just for Ryan's benefit, uh, we have a, you know, like, um, some, um, policies around, you know, putting markers, like if they're in the street, they have to be washable, they can't be permanent things. And I did notice that they're saying that their markers are putting, like, in pegs, and that they'll take them out. So, so I'm wondering if they did talk to the police about it, but.
Second.
Okay. All right, so we've got a motion, and we, did we have a second?
I just seconded.
You seconded, David Modell. Great. Uh, all right, uh, any more discussion? All right, let's do a roll call vote, please. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously.
Let me ask a question out of order. I just got a text from somebody who was with somebody who had COVID. Would you like me to go home?
Oh, then you're wearing a mask.
They don't have COVID. The person I was with didn't have COVID, but they were with somebody who has COVID.
And they just learned that.
They just, I just got a text.
I don't know that the half an hour is going to make a difference.
I have masks if everybody would like.
I have a mask, too, actually.
Just got over it, so. Ready to go.
Don't leave home without your mask.
I still have not gotten.
I haven't either.
Like, thank goodness. I've been with some pity dollars. Would you like to?
Take one for the imaging.
You just had it, so.
Yeah, that's true.
You're safe.
Okay, and we drove David from the room. Okay. Now you're probably looking to get a mask, yeah. Um, all right, so then back to, um, Ryan's report or Steve's report.
Steve's report through Ryan.
Ryan.
So, um, the American Cancer Fund for Children has requested that the Town of Carlisle declare September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Certainly a worthy cause. Um, we enclosed in your packet a proclamation for the Board's consideration, which I have right here. And if, um, you're willing to proclaim it as such, can vote on it as the motion, and then sign this, this document, which we will display.
I move the Select Board of the Town of Carlisle, Massachusetts recognizes and proclaims the month of September 2022 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Carlisle.
Second. Any discussion? So we haven't done this one before, have we? This is a new thing, but, um, seems like a very worthwhile cause. Does anyone else have a comment? All right, then, uh, let's move ahead and, um, by, uh, voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, that motion carries.
All right, so following COVID protocols, I'll keep it here. Everyone can sign it without passing around and touching it. All right, um, there's an old safe covered by a cloth located in this room.
Yeah.
Sure, haven't seen it yet. It used to be in there somewhere.
It's over in the corner.
There it is. That's the safe.
Yeah.
So it's not locked and has no contents. The Historical Society is interested in it, and we are not. So if the Board is interested, a vote to declare its surplus and not needed by the town would be in order, as well as permission to donate it to the Carlisle Historical Society.
So page 31.
Before the motion. Can I say something about this?
Sure.
Um, so unfortunately, I wasn't here in the last meeting when the, the scales were voted, um, surplus and given away. I guess I'd like to know, like, what is the overall plan for the historical items that are in Town Hall? You know, I think in the past, what the town has done is, um, if there was something that they wanted to, like the library with, oh, oh, the Civil War, um, articles, they retained the ownership of it, but they gave over custody, um, to the Historical Society. They then since took it back. But, um, you know, it, it's, you know, I don't know if everybody saw, you know, a, all the articles about this table. This is actually an original 18, late 1800s table, one of the first pieces of furniture. It's actually written up in one of the history books. Um, these books were, and the, the, this table is one, the, the first, one of the first tables that was in the library. And I just want to make sure that we're respecting the history of Carlisle, and we understand what it is that, you know, it's like, does anybody here, if we're voting this, does anybody here knows? What was that used for? What were these used, you know, what were the scales used for? I mean, I realize that one's done, but just understanding, you know, like, what is the plan? And maybe not transferring it to Historical Society, but putting it, you know, and trusting it to the Historical Society so that it's still a town-owned asset. Um, I just think we haven't had that discussion, but we've talked about making all these changes to Clark Room, um, but we haven't had any discussion about it as a board. And I think we should have, if we're, if we're voting to, you know, give things away in order to do things, I think we should have a discussion about it rather than do them. Look, you're, you're smiling, I think.
I, I, yeah, I think that's really interesting. It's kind of, we're a microcosm of the nation. I mean, thinking about, you know, it's like monuments, taking them away. And, and so, yeah, why not have better understand them? I don't know. It's, you know, some value, but I think my personal opinion is we also have to kind of keep on track with, you know, all the things we have as a board to do. And yes, this is an important part of that, but I don't know, what are you proposing? Like spending time or research materials or what?
I guess I'm proposing that we kind of know what, what we're, the plan is, like, you know, we're, you know, if we're, if we're, if we're declaring the safe. Which is historical asset to the town. If we're declaring that surplus and giving it to Historical Society, if we're doing that with this. I think this is now going upstairs and not being destroyed. You you know. Why? What are we doing? Um, and uh. Just ensuring that. We are protecting the assets of the town, you know. I think there's, it's, you know, they they are historical assets and I think. I'm not saying that transferring it to Historical Society is a bad thing. I just, we haven't had any discussion about it.
They're not part of the town?
No, they're not part of the town. They are a separate nonprofit organization.
I think the meeting, you may not have been at one of our previous meetings, but and Dave Modell spoke on this and you can speak again, but and we we did talk a little bit about this table in particular and its significance. But also in the context of acquiring new furniture and how, you know, we are making a judgment about, you know. Preserving Carlisle's past, but also kind of moving forward. And I think you're, if I understand you right, you're saying we should give a little more. Understanding to the past before we just kind of cast it off and make sure we're we're preserving that in a way, or at least thinking about how we're going to preserve it. And I, what I would say is, I think we've, we've done that, at least in my opinion, to a reasonable degree, because we heard from. Members of the community even through different channels about the significance of this table and and I think in some of these items and we spoke to that and and I think we've given it reasonable. In my opinion, reasonable care and nobody's saying we're just going to, you know, burn this table and throw it out. We actually work to preserve it. So I think it's reasonable, given what we're doing. It's my.
So then, just if I may ask, what is the historical? What's the history behind this safe that we're going to be declaring surplus tonight?
I have a good guess. That this is Kim. That safe is identical to the safe that we had in our treasures department in Egger Town that we had way, way back and we. Got rid of it after when we did a big um. Renovation in Newtown Hall. So treasures had to keep cash and you had to have a cash where it couldn't be taken away. So. When I first started to as our treasurer, any receipts come in that day, checks turned over. Were put in the the safe and it's got a heavy door. It was a combination. There must be a combination somewhere. And nobody could take away with it. There is no safe now in the treasurer's office. It's a drawer. But the safe shoes you were marked with the town and they were exactly like that. And we had an exact one. In Egger Town. So it was probably one of the original safe shoes by the treasures department to keep the cash in that was locked up every night that was not deposited.
Does anybody know the age of the safe?
It's just not very antique.
Yeah. I don't.
No.
Does it open? Does it work?
I don't know.
The family has been opened and it has no contents in it.
We verified that. That I would find.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, um.
Uh, it it, well, yeah.
I, what I was, the only thing I was going to add is that um, we also did have some conversation um. Nathan, I think it was in one of Steve Ledoux's reports. And and it may be one of a meeting that you may not have been part of where he described. What he and David had had. Thought about for this room and then in discussions with the council on aging. Who are using this room fairly often and sort of the need to try to make this a more of a multipurpose room. Rather than um. Sort of thinking of it still as a formal meeting room, but not, it's so. That that kind of is what um drove, I think, the discussion about. Then looking at the various items that are in here that that are not being used. And what what should be done with those. And so reaching out to the Historical Society. Around that cabinet and the contents of it. Um. You know, I don't think we did not discuss the question of whose, you know, would we retain ownership and just give them custody? And maybe that's something we ought to step back and think about, but I'm comfortable moving ahead with. We're, you know. Finding a good home for the safe. So do you uh, do you want to sort of offer, do you want to? Suggest we hold off and on voting on this one?
Discussions with the Historical Society have been about transferring the ownership of it to it. So I think it would be odd to. Change the motion now without. Talking with them about it. You know, I think. You know.
We, I mean, we're, we probably, you know, that's one of the boards that. Let me just step back and say. There's two different issues I think that you're bringing up and they're both legitimate. One is. How do we more efficiently use a space, this particular space? And yes, I I'm a proponent. Partly, you know, for green, just because it's more efficient. You heat it and you cool it and you light it. All day, we should use it all day and and the COA has expressed, they do in fact use it. They expressed frustration to me as a liaison back earlier this year, last year, I can't remember. That it was difficult to effectively multipurpose this space. So we started. With the biggest impediment, which is the table doesn't move easily. And so we ordered some other tables and then this, you know, that part. And then Steve actually looked around like, what's this? What's this? Like, why is all this? Stuff here, right? So I think from this. Objective of multi-use of the space. I think we're doing a good thing and in keeping with our other, you know, high level. Town objectives. You raise a different good point, which is. Large, you know, a different issue, large issue of how do we? What are we doing to preserve character? How are we maintaining that? And I would say. We're overdue to talk to the histor- historical commission. On a number of things.
The commission of the society.
Well, I don't know.
Well, it's interesting. I mean, that is an important.
Maybe, maybe both of them, but certainly the society is the one with the museum, right? Because they're the ones with the museum.
Right.
You know. I'm with Barney. I'm comfortable. Not us holding the asset, but giving them the asset. But I would like to know about their mission and. You know, I mean. Retaining artifacts of importance. And I don't know if either of these are important, but. Retaining artifacts of importance to Carlisle's culture. In some fashion is a good thing, so.
And that's, I don't know if this is important.
No, but I mean, we could, so to your point, we could continue this, but we should. Put them on the radar.
Yeah.
And have them come in and explain what they're going to do with them.
Because the Historical Commission is off, they are. And, you know, outside of the historic district, you know, we don't have a historic district commission. We have a historic commission.
Right.
So they are advisory on all things history across the entire town. So I think asking them, I did email Steve when this all came up and said, have we asked them?
Yeah.
And, you know, I think, I think we should. At least ask them. Um, you know, they may know. I got a call from somebody who's lived in town. All their life. Um, and, you know, they were listing off what all the things here were. Um, and, you know, just saying, let's please just. Not lose it, right? You know, it's not, it shouldn't go to the Historical Society. Um. They're not against the Historical Society. That's where I met her, was on that board. Um, but um. Just making sure that we're having the discussions and we we know what we're doing. And I think it was mostly in reaction to this table. Um, because, you know, the discussion was this was going to be tossed, I think, originally. Um, and so. I think that there's just a concern that we as the Board of Selectmen. Are considering that and discussing that and understanding what it is that we're doing with. Artifacts that may be of significance to the town. And then just making an informed decision. It could be. That there's five hundred thousand of those things and, you know, who really cares? Um, but. But but we don't know. I'm not trying to make it prolonged. I'm just wanting to make it a, let's just, let's know what we're doing.
Yeah.
What was that?
The scale there?
Yeah, when you talked about that last week.
Um.
Or my last meeting.
The the um, that was what was used to um.
Steve said.
To check the um. That was the weights and measurement tool.
The official weight and measuring.
Calibrate your scales.
To calibrate like for.
At the stores.
Ferns.
Right.
I think it was ferns and.
Was it?
Still use it?
Yeah, yeah.
It was the, it was the measure, measurer, measurer, right, or whatever.
Right.
The calibration scale.
Right.
Again, I'm not saying anything bad about the Historical Society. You know, you know, I think that. I think it's just us knowing what we're doing.
Yeah. So back to this.
We were assuming that, you know, Historic Society would.
Do a good.
Would do a good job of.
Right.
I would assume that too, but it is important, like, you know, Dave, Dave was saying, wait, are they not a town body? They they aren't a town body, so we should. That's why we're declaring it surplus.
Right. Right.
Right, okay.
So should we do?
Contingent so that we could move ahead in case, well, I guess we need another meetings, but.
Right, you, you, would you like to hold off? Are you okay with us going ahead with this motion since we've already done the previous? Made the previous decisions or would you like to wait? Till we have a chance to have this historical.
Urgency in doing it today? I don't know what.
It's just all part of what.
I mean, there is flooring, I would say.
Oh, that's true.
Flooring coming in, so the.
Yeah.
Intention is that. That goes, this is going to get repurposed to something smaller when we've ordered better IT, upgraded IT and. Or I should say AV and I, but my understanding is it won't need that big cabinet.
Right.
And the safe is heavy to move. We are going to put.
We want to move it.
A multipurpose floor, um, which will be better for its new use, so.
Then could we, rather than declaring it surplus, just um, do what I was saying would be weird to do, but just say that, you know, we would, we're transferring custody of the safe to the Historical Society and we'll consider it a future date whether or not we. Sure, it's surplus. Okay.
So we.
That's what I just did.
Now, did we already have a motion on the floor?
No.
Okay, great. So I'm sorry, you, let's say it one more time.
Uh, I move that uh, we transfer uh, the custody of the safe in the Clark Room uh, to the Historical Society. And in the future, we'll consider transferring of ownership.
Second.
Alright, any more discussion? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you all for listening to me.
Of course.
Of course.
Yeah.
Wait, I almost, you know, this was frankly, the scales, in my opinion, would have been more important to do that with than the safe. I'm.
I agree with you. I wish I hadn't been sick.
Yeah.
Yeah. I I strongly suspect that safe is really. Not of much value.
Alright, back to Ryan. Uh, we have uh, I, number four, the police officer candidate.
Alright. Great. So at the select board's first meeting in July, the board authorized a police chief to perform a background check on a candidate. That background check came back with with issues, so the appointment is not going to be pursued. Just notifying the board of this, the chief will be coming in front of the board at some point to request another background check on a new candidate. Um, alright, now moving back to my. Way from Steve back to me. Uh, staff recognition. So normally I'd like to highlight a individual. On the staff or or board volunteer committee that that's done something. Uh, that's worth the board's attention and, you know, that stuff happens daily. But um, overall, just like to thank the staff for welcoming me. Um, there was no pushback um, yet. And Steve um, really helped me during the transition. So just that, the idea that we're going to. Pass this on and build a quality team and um. You should know that every one of the employees came to the meeting with typed out prepared notes about their department. What they wanted to talk about, what they wanted to accomplish with substantive comments about how to improve the town. So. That's a little detail that that matters to someone like me and should matter to you in terms of the quality of people that you've appointed here and that you have working for the town. So I'm ready to go energized and um. Your upcoming meetings are listed here as well, and that is my report. Ms. Chair.
It's awesome to have you here.
It is.
Welcome.
Yeah. And it's, and it's, I'm really excited too, the response you've had from staff and that really is a good sign for. Moving forward together. Um, I wanted to give. Do you want to say a little bit about the Assistant Town Administrator or? I know people have it in their packet. I wondered if uh, it made sense to. See if anybody here has a. Any comment they would like to offer on what's been. Uh, put out for that position.
Is it for us to set up a screening committee or for the?
Yeah, Ryan, tell us how you're thinking about that.
Uh, I had planned to set up a. A s- a small screening committee to. To review candidates and an interview and then bring. Bring a quality candidate in front of you unless you want. Two or three.
Oh, three candidates?
Yes.
And the screening committee, I think I saw in here somewhere, you were thinking of a couple of people on the staff, right? Doing that with you?
Yes, someone from the finance team, Jennifer for sure, who'll be working daily with this person. Um, another department or public safety official and then even a member of the board if that's what you want.
And when, when are you thinking, uh, or when are you planning to post this?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay. Uh, any, any questions or comments from the board?
Well, I would just say, I think that you had a question about whether or not, you know, we wanted one, two or three. I would think that we want the best, my opinion would be, we want to see the best candidate.
Yeah.
From this, from the committee, unless the committee wants help in deciding what are the.
Yeah.
I, I think having one select. Board member on the screening would be sufficient to. Enough part of the vetting. As a representative and then, yes, the finalists would come. Before us.
As a county people.
I think that's good. I mean, I think it was different for the town administrator role because that reports directly to us.
Yeah, yeah.
This is somebody that's going to report to Ryan.
Uh, I'd be interested in being the. Select Board Rep. They've been. Pretty intimately involved with the. Personnel policy.
Anybody else dying to? Be on the screening committee? Okay.
Choose your words carefully.
Just have a quick question for I.
No.
No comments about that at all.
Alright, thanks.
Attract somebody for seventy five?
Yeah, I was wondering that myself.
Yeah.
Um, at that, at that level, we're going to attract someone who wants to uh, work with me to develop their career. So if we did se-. Secure an employee at that level, I wouldn't expect to retain them very long.
Huh.
Right. And and would we be able to get somebody who say had? Really good HR experience?
I think combined with me. We can pull that, we can pull that off. Um, you're either going to get someone who was assisting in the HR world that wants to move up to the executive level or a candidate with. Public administration experience that's going to be learning HR, but whoever comes in will get. Crash course for me and then um, there are plenty of resources and training. To offer. Wha- what I picture for this position and of course, welcome to feedback is is not. It's not necessary an HR director, but a coordinator.
Uh huh.
Of HR resources. So because there's appointing authorities all across town and there are several employees dedicated to human resources. Not looking to usurp that, but coordinate that in a, in a function like. Having stuff prepared for screening committees and making sure our boards are. Adhering to to best practices and then working on filing and the the other items that are necessary for for HR functions. Um, we already have someone who's very good at delivering benefits in that briefing. I received it myself. And we have a staff that's used to hiring, so it's more combining the duties and then building it over time.
So could we make it commensurate with experience rather than putting a number in there?
I'm sure.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea. So the question, Ryan, you mentioned. You mentioned that um. I don't know if I caught it correctly, but. Somebody either that has human resource capability wants to step up or. Somebody who's been public administration wants to expand laterally into the HR side. So I did a little Venn diagram on my paper here. So if you. The intersection of that, so somebody who's got. Relevant public sector HR experience might be expensive and maybe we don't need that. So it's your sense. You'd rather have somebody who's got some HR sense and teach them the public side or somebody who understands public government and teach them the HR side?
I would prefer the HR experience, but I would take either.
Okay. Um, okay, so that's important to kind of keep in your mind. And then says that may attract some private sector HR people and the question is, can they map over? And I think they can. And I would say. You mentioned a few things like benefits administration and hiring. You know, my experience. That's the quote unquote mechanical side of HR. So yes, they can. It's more important, I think Kay would agree, having gone through this. It's the soft side of HR that we really need to work on, like getting people to work together, understand goals. You know, feedback, three six, I mean, there's so many things in HR that. We don't do any of and and that. So I would just, my advice is. You know, feedback, three six, I mean, there's so many things in HR that we don't do any of and, and that. So I would just, my advice is. You can easily teach the mechanical side, but it's the other side. You gotta get the person who really thinks that way about organizations and organizational behavior. Career development.
And HR is going to be a team approach, so. Really, you don't want to be paying me to do, to do the.
No, we don't want you to.
Me to be doing the soft side with the ATA. So I, I do, I'm very thrilled about this position. It's going to be. Uh, a huge assistance to Jennifer, myself and the finance team to be able to take some of these duties and coordinate them. Um, at this level candidly, you're, you're hopefully get someone who's up and coming and. They're going to learn quickly and then they're going to be very attractive and they're going to move on. Um, so we can address that over time or.
But if they set things in motion.
Then that's.
Probably okay.
My feeling, I'm not trying to spend more money, but this is a really important.
Yeah.
That we've waited a long time for and I think we want to, we want Ryan to find the right.
Yeah.
Person, which is why I would say insert with experience, not seventy-five where we're just. If, if somebody else comes in and they're at. I don't know, a hundred, like, do we want to not get them? Um, because of that.
Yeah.
You wouldn't get, they wouldn't apply. So you wouldn't know, you wouldn't know that they're there.
So what, how would this?
I agree. I completely agree.
Yeah, so how?
With me, Ryan? Or, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but.
I do.
Okay.
So how would it read then where it says now salary seventy-five thousand? Sorry, what does DOQ mean?
Depending on quality.
Depending on qualifications, ah.
Right, exactly right.
Okay.
I think uh. Nathan, you should put your head in, you got good HR sense there, you should.
I, I owe you a full answer. So. There, there are HR needs and salary needs across the town. I've been here six days, right? So my initial analysis, but. Every time you go above what you said you were going to do, you're taking it away from somewhere else that also has need.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, we do need a quality person in the ATA position, but we also need investments in other areas to improve some of the things that are in your goals. So the, the answer is not, my answer would be yes, we need to increase it if we want to attract a. High performing candidate, but. Is that more important than shifting it elsewhere? I'm not sure yet.
Yeah.
So I can't answer you fully.
Now, and but with, with this change, we have the opportunity to make the decision in the future.
Yes.
We're not having people self-select out of the pool.
Right.
We could get somebody. Who's killer and we, you know, just to go get our entry, entry level, more entry level person that, you know, will take a three year, four year risk on or whatever. And that we want to invest in it. We, we, we have options this way.
It's always good to remove constraints if you don't need them. So I agree with that.
Now I hire IT people and right now it is impossible to hire anyone.
And we learned because we lowballed the IT. We didn't, I don't know if we really did a recruitment or never.
It was supposed to, not one person applied.
Nobody replied because we totally lowballed it. So.
Yeah, right.
And we would have the same problem today. That's what you're saying. So.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, well, that's, it sounds good. And uh, we're excited to. Have this go forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. And thanks Kate for serving on the committee.
We vote her or she just does, right? You know, we don't.
No, we don't. We.
Let me know.
Been briefed.
I'm in town.
Okay.
What happens when you get these hired people on your board?
Then uh, let's see, are there, is there anything else, uh, Ryan, that you wanted to bring up?
Nope, that's enough. And now we're on to next week's stuff.
Yeah. Okay. So we have a draft um.
First this draft.
Of the, was given out uh. On paper tonight just for this, the September.
Didn't align with.
Two weeks from now.
Tonight. For a date on some of these.
On the top instead of it, yeah, I know.
I thought it was three.
Usually there is. Jen, Jen went on vacation and her trainees changed.
Suggestions.
But you know, I, I do think Travis, we haven't typically had the date on the top where it says agenda. It just has been listed at the bottom, you know, with the Zoom link. So I think it'd be helpful to put it up there too, especially when I'm saying, welcome to the Carlos Select Board Meeting of um.
Okay.
So take a look at this, obviously the uh.
Well, we don't have the number two.
Special Town Meeting, right? That's gone.
Could start bringing in a committee or two.
And then the change would be, we made the um. So this has got an executive session on it.
Which we need, but that's be changed.
We need it.
We put it at seven?
That would be at seven.
The hearing, uh, right. So that should go in the seven o'clock. Um. Officer Smith hearing.
So that may work out just right then.
Yeah.
If we have.
If we need it, yeah. Okay.
We probably, Barney should develop two agendas. One with and one without that hearing and then we can figure out something to slot in if we like a committee.
Yeah, sort of, right.
Make that change closer.
That gets me death in public, right? It needs to be on the agenda either way.
I know, but we don't have to produce the actual agenda till, you know, the week before. So.
Right.
We may have clarity.
The draft, yeah. This, this initial draft. Um. Now this, and we may cha- want to change the order of this, but what we um. W- David and I and Ryan met to, to look at this. And so we thought it would make sense to then take another look at our goals and look at the, some of the specific ones. And what, what next steps do we need to take? Um, so that's on here for half an hour. And then uh. This, this is the, the, the item number four is something that. I think we've talked a little bit about uh, when we were discussing our goals and I know. That this is something I've been very interested in and, and David and Kate also have mentioned it, we've discussed it is um. Offering a, a, some kind of a workshop uh, for board chairs and any other board members. Um, but targeting particularly new board chairs, but as a way to um, have everybody. One, meet each other, you know, as an effort to really get boards interacting more, but also uh, to take it as an opportunity to. Review open meeting laws, review how minutes are supposed to be taken and then some of the other kind of responsibilities of a committee and a, and in particular the chairperson. That, that's the general idea and we thought it would be good for us as a select board to discuss it and sort of flesh it out. Um, and then see if.
In the past, Tom, Karen, Kenny, happy to come and talk through.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we should, I think, well, we absolutely should have OML training. From council. They have a package, I'm sure. Or does MA? MASBS like.
There is a, there is a.
But this is more like a, a power.
Tom has a whole thing that he can come in and we're happy to come in and, and.
Yeah.
He expects.
That should be pretty much every, it should be required of all new members. I don't know if it is or not.
It is, I can believe.
And um, does the Massachusetts Association of Select Boards, do we even have a liaison, a membership? Cause school committee uses MASC extensively. And they provide all training materials for all kinds of.
Right.
I don't know.
Well, yeah, the Mass Municipal Association.
MMA.
Yeah, has, has stuff for select boards and we could look into that. But remember Dave, you and I had said we would draft something.
Yes. I'm happy now that we've picked up.
That'll, we did have something I thought that circulated a.
Yeah, it was a while back. Yes.
I know, I can, I wrote a whole list of things that I thought we needed to address with.
Yeah.
Well, we came up with a list, but now we have to actually do the list.
Well, what I'm suggesting is that we just do a, a, a preparation of some, sort of a draft session and that that's what we discuss in two weeks.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, this is a slight tangent, but could we also in, it kind of, oh, apropos of this. Um, the open meeting law requires that you take minutes and that you approve them. Within three um, three meetings or thirty days, which is ever longer, but it has no requirement to post them. And I think we should have a town policy.
Ah.
To post minutes.
Uh huh.
And I think we should be. I think we should, I'd like to get this policy written sooner rather than later. And then present it to these. This. Context to all the new chairs.
Or I think, Jeremy, it used to be you went to town clerk to do it, but now with the website. You know, there's even a section there that says minute, but so often they're just not there. I think it's a, I think it's a good idea is.
Yeah.
Because you shouldn't have to go to the, to the chair or to one of them, you know, or to the secretary or what, it, it all should be.
Or the town clerk. The town clerk is supposed to have them.
Yeah, well.
If you have a website, why have that extra step?
Yes.
I, I think this will hopefully be solved or at least, you know, worked on with the website. I do think that this, because once it becomes standard that everything gets published on there, it's easy to find and, you know, in, in a way that's I think more robust than our current website.
The one thing though, Nate, then is that have, sending them to the town clerk for posting. That gives her some control and then she knows, because she knows, she's posted your meeting and then she's able to match up the meeting with the. With the minutes and then she can remind you that you didn't get minutes for that one. So I wouldn't maybe change that process, but I. Apparently she has, there's some committees that never send her any minutes and they, they're not required to. So even if she asks, they don't have to send them to her.
But also, you know, just along the, the thing of minutes, I can't even. I can't even think of the last time when we actually. Approved minutes of executive session and declared an executive session.
And we have to do that too.
Right.
I think it's when there, there's, there is, there are some guidelines, but we should have those reviewed.
Yeah.
Probably, that would be a nice thing.
Yeah.
To do soon.
Yeah.
Right. Cause until those minutes have been approved and we've declared it public, we can't talk about anything that we talked about there, you know, we, so we can't decide, oh, it's okay to talk outside of the. That meeting where we can't. And you know, we, we go through that step.
Right.
Um, now it came up tonight, uh. This meeting, this proposal, um. You know, we've, we've um. Taken out the discussion about the special town meeting. So. We could, as a group, decide tonight or people could give suggestions about what else they think we need to, what would make sense to.
Well, only if we don't have a hearing, because we injected the hearing at seven. So if we do the hearing at seven. Everything just slides down and back.
True.
If we, that's why I was suggesting alternate slate.
Yeah.
We look, we should prepare that. We should have something like. Standby that we couldn't. Slot in like meeting with a committee.
Yeah.
You know, we haven't that, I mean, we just think I'm a sort of here, but we didn't agree with them. There's a budget setting process. That's probably the first committee you want to see and then. It's always good to check in with schools. I mean, there's plenty of choices, right? We should kind of start that process.
Was it, the Governance Task Force said their report would be available? I don't know if that means they're ready to.
Well, we could put that on as for the, to present it.
Will she be ready then?
That's what she says today. We'll be ready on the thirteen.
Should do that.
Okay.
She, uh, she prepared to present it or just to produce it?
I, well, I'm guessing she would.
If it's ready to be produced, it'll, it's ready to present. No, I understand.
Yeah.
That's not the question I asked.
She, yeah, no, she'll, she'll present it.
Okay.
I mean, I, we, we can check up, we can check with her on that, make sure she's available, but yeah, that would be the idea. Okay. That um, that's a full meeting then. Any other, but other board members have any pressing or particular things they want to?
I just have one, one thing. As we were, as we were doing and, and. Need to bring this up, but as, as we were doing the appointments, I just noticed that the person's address was not in there and we do have people in town with the same name. And I think we ran into that with an election like years ago. Um, yeah, where somebody was written in. Um, and so it's like, well, who's, so I think it's good to have.
Yeah.
The address there just so that it's clear who we're appointing. So there isn't.
I, I knew that as well.
Yeah.
Just, there are too many Bob Zogs and, and too many Christina's, but yes, uh.
But we need, when we ask people to send a letter of interest, we need to ask them, it'd be helpful to include their address, right?
Yes, because that.
Because then if, when you're putting the motion together, then you're scrambling to find the person's address, especially if we don't have Jen here.
Right. And you may find the wrong person.
Yeah, you're right. Exactly. Alright, good point. Uh, anything else? Board members?
I, so the person that had contacted was several days ago. Obviously. The home tests are not a hundred percent accurate, but it came back negative if that makes anybody.
Oh, good. Good.
You can take a mask off. I don't know. You have a sixty percent, forty percent chance being able to pick up your mask right now, right? Forty percent chance.
Yes, Travis.
I had something I wanted, I mean, we were not really doing committee reports, I think, but I just.
Oh, we do. Okay.
For tonight? I don't want to jump the gun then.
Yeah, for tonight, right here. Item number six at nine twenty-five. We're way ahead.
Alright, well, I, I just wanted to, to run something or. Something by the, the board. So on the municipal facilities committee, um, you know, Brian mentioned about the ramp for the. Police Department are also working on the DPW sprinkling the trailers. Um, many of you may know about that. Um, but a question came up in the meeting because the brick schoolhouse that's next to Highland. Um, has, has to have some work done to the chimney, has to re-point the chimney. And um, there was a question from the reporter at the mosquito, well, who's going to pay for that? And you know, everyone looked to me as the select board saying, well, you know, in, in, it's on school grounds, but it's, it's owned by the, or the property. The building, I guess, is owned by the um, select board, the town, the town. So I did.
I thought just Highland, Highland is, I'm not sure Brick is.
Highland is, I'm not sure Brick. Because Brick is the one that gave the lease to the.
Well, that's what I found out in the process. So Kate was helpful. I've, I've reached out to try and figure out and hold this. Item um, and Kelly. Well, that was one, one question, yeah. Um, but Kelly Bear of the town accountant uh, provided me the asset list. Um, but it shows up as an asset of the town and you can't differentiate because all the school buildings are on the asset list too. So um, Holly Mansfield, I talked with her as the Rec. Recreation Department Director and she said that they have a lease on the building through um, six thirty, two thousand thirty. And because of, in, in that lease, um, the school is paying for all the utilities and the general operating, but they're responsible for the. Maintenance and upkeep of which this would be considered as the kind of a capital. So she is working on getting quotes. Uh, for that with, I believe the municipal facilities with Steve, one of the two Steves um, is, is working on that as well. But I just bring that up because I think that one of the things that I'm going to want to talk with you all about and going forward is the municipal facilities and, you know, our school. As you, many of you know, the school is separated from the town facilities and I think as part of our regionalization discussion, I think that's. One way that we should, one area we should definitely investigate. So I'm going to kind of put together some thoughts on that and come to you with that.
And it would simplify then the ownership question because then there's no question. It's just like the maintenance department would be responsible for it. No matter whose asset it is. I mean, it's a town asset.
Right.
Everything's a town.
Everything is a town asset.
I'll, I'll do a little more research and come to you with, with some of this. Okay.
Great. Anyone else um, have a liaison report?
I'd add one other thing for the school committee. It doesn't mean till the, the fourteenth, but um, the castle playground, um, you know, publicly, I just want to make sure. Everyone knows that their volunteers are needed. If you haven't signed up and you're, you're part of the community, it's a community effort. So hopefully. Um, people can volunteer.
Bring my skill saw.
I'm hoping that.
And my hammer.
As, as everybody gets back to town, we'll see more people.
That's the thought. I think that, that is, especially this, the. Parents who have children in the school will say, wow, there's an immediate need and we're going to help out. But I hope other people in the community. Um, show up because of, be uh, good for our community.
Yeah, yeah. I remember when we had moved to town and then shortly after. We and our two girls at the time did, worked on the castle. Yeah, it was pretty great.
So we had a um, uh, negotiation meeting with Comcast.
Oh.
I think it was last week.
Yeah.
Um, and uh, so I think that we're making really good progress. Um, I don't have anything detailed to report yet other than. We actually have some pretty good information now about what is served and what is not served. Um, and we have some uh, good definitions around. Um, you know, uh. Uh. In, in, in talking about the cost of bringing something like exactly how far would we, you know, i- i- how far are they charging for? And so there's a lot of follow-ups that need, need to come back. I'm not trying to be opaque, but I don't want to give anything away and um, and also. There's more, there's more that we're waiting back from, but I think we've made. Um, in the last, um, in the last meeting in particular, I think we made some really good breakthroughs that um, hopefully when we meet, um. I think it's this week, um, uh, again with them, um, we will um, be able to start getting to.
I think it's this week, um, uh, again with them, um, we will, um, be able to start getting to some real, some of the real nuts and bolts of it. So, so far it's been discovery, um, so.
Good, yeah, really good.
Here.
Anyone else?
Not attending so many meetings anymore.
Hmm, feels really good.
Would you like to attend some more?
She just signed up for the screening committee.
Yeah, well, that's different, that's different, that's, that's, you know.
Yeah. All right, well, excellent, everyone, um, before we adjourn, I would like to just remind anyone that is in town tomorrow that there's an ice cream social happening here at Town Hall. Am I correct that it's tomorrow? Yes, uh, I think it is. And this is to welcome Ryan to town. It's not a surprise, is it, Ryan?
Nope.
Okay. All right, so that's a.
What time?
Two o'clock tomorrow, yeah. All right. Yes.
Come, but I don't think right now anybody wants to be coming into town.
Oh. All right, um, great, well, may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty, the meeting's adjourned, thank you all.
To Ryan.